Okay, call speed in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Shaker.
Here.
Alderman Doc. Your turn.
Uh, next time on the agenda is our invocation to be led by Pastor Darryl Jones from Crossroads Church. Followed by a pledge of allegiance from some of our local Boy Scouts this evening.
Stand.
We give you thanks tonight Father for our lives and for the community that we live in, for the leaders that we have the opportunity to serve under and the opportunity to serve together in this community. Father, thank you for our neighbors and just for, just for a community that cares. And we see so much in the news and hear so much from friends around the country and it's just, just good to be a part of a community of people that care. So I pray for this meeting tonight, for the Alderman, for the mayor, for city officials. Business they must transact and I just pray that you would give them wisdom, servant clarity and God pray that our constituency would trust our leaders and have the ability to follow the direction that they sent us. And we just give you thanks. Jesus.
Now, if you're prepared, if we have the colors. Scout, red color. Scout, attention. Blue. Blue, still full. Can you follow some of the questions?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on a ground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next time my agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We would actually like to move executive session from the end of the meeting up to, it will actually be section 11. It'll be right after public hearings before previous business.
And do we know the...
Legal.
Legal?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only change there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion then to move an executive session after item 10, public hearing for matters concerning legal? Questions, Alderman Arnold, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Shaker. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, the agenda is admitted. Next item then is proclamation for an Eagle Scout that they could come forward.
Whereas Ryan K. Neater Shilte has distinguished himself by obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout with Boy Scout Troop 310, whereas Ryan has been recognized in this area for his outstanding community service, leadership skills, positive attitude, and academic achievement. Whereas Ryan has proven to be an asset to the Green Valley community through his family and his friends, whereas Ryan has set an example for others to follow and has distinguished himself and distributed his community with this award. Whereas the City of Green Valley would also like to recognize Ryan for his outstanding achievement of becoming an Eagle Scout. Now therefore we proclaim that the City of Green Valley, Board Alderman, and Mayor Mike Todd are proud to recognize Ryan K. Neater Shilte for achieving scouting's highest honor bestowed, the rank of Eagle Scout, dated this eighth day of December 2014.
Okay, next time my agenda is citizens' participation. Uh, we ask this and step forward to the microphone and podium to address the board. Have any citizens who wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda.
Have motion from Alderman Scotty to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Next item then is discussion and we have a Q and A session with the local Boy Scout to come forward and ask the board questions. Normally, we typically do this before the meetings, but I thought, you know what, instead of me just being on the hot seat tonight, why don't we let the whole board take the questions? So I think they have a list of questions they want to ask, so the floor's theirs if they wish to step forward to the podium microphone and ask away.
So, um, on behalf of the boys of Troop 310 here, we'd like to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to participate in tonight's meeting. We are currently working on our citizenship in the community merit badge. One of our requirements is to attend a city meeting and later discuss one of the issues where a difference of opinion occurs, so please feel free to have a difference of opinion. We need something to discuss next week. We are also supposed to pick an issue that is important to our citizens, learn which branch of our local government is responsible for it, and interview that person. The topic that the boys have chosen as a group is bringing new businesses to Green Valley, and the following are just a few of the questions that they have in regards to that.
First question I have for you today is, what are the thriving businesses that are present today? Because really finding businesses that we need to have in Green Valley, we need to find what is really popular today and understand that and bring that to Green Valley.
All of you by answer.
I'll let you go first, Mayor. Go.
Okay, so what's the, the popular ones today? Uh, I think, uh, I mean currently I think everyone knows, and we have some new businesses, McDonald's Cross Street Theater doing, doing very well, uh, the movie theater, uh, B and B Theater, it constantly scores, is one of their, one of their top theaters, so it's, it's doing very well, uh...
What are some, uh, new ideas that might possibly like bring...
New ones? Thing is, we have lots of new ideas, it's always trying to get them, you know, here. I mean, number one I think is we definitely want to see more retail type businesses, uh, restaurants, they're a big thing, and we have...
Is that how we're gonna utilize the new strip mall that's going in now during, uh, near the movie theater?
Uh, I mean, there's, there are actually, there are outlaw, outlaw platted and that development for, uh, fast food and sit-down type restaurants both. Uh, our biggest thing is we need to, you know, sell Green Valley to the businesses to come. Uh, you know, we have a brand new movie theater there, a lot of things we hear, hey, we love the movie theater, we love coming to town, but there's no place to eat. So, you know, that's one of our big things, to get businesses attracted there. I know one story that we have with getting restaurants in town is, especially a lot of your sit-down restaurants, like your Applebee's, your Olive Garden, 54th Street, a lot of them have to have a good lunch business, and Green Valley's known with, kind of known as a bedroom community where, you know, our residents tend to leave town during the day and then come back at night, so, you know, a lot of restaurant type businesses fear that they won't have a good lunch business because they're just, you know, not, you know, we don't have the office space and things like that around.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything they want to add to that?
To add to that is, as citizens of the community, when you're in a business, if you like a restaurant, a mercantile, that, a chain store, you talk to a manager and let them know, hey, you know, we'd love to have one of these in Green Valley and we only have, and you know pretty much what we have. So if you start that grassroots thing of letting people know, you never know, you talk to that right person, he talks to the person above him, and the next thing you know, you've affected how Green Valley's gonna grow by, by getting a business or a restaurant that you like to visit or frequent to, to look at Green Valley and think about coming here.
Another thing that's been done, obviously all the road construction, all the property up north here, uh, has, has been changed and platted, so it is more attractive for newer businesses to come or, or businesses in town to move to a more visible spot along the highway. And prior to that, there was an old truck stop that, uh, many cases over the course of 20 years I've lived here was opened and closed multiple times and, uh, make shop. I think I had some struggles, uh, there towards, you know, the last few years, but I think the, the property would be better utilized for retail here in the near future.
Okay.
One of the biggest problems we have in town here with businesses and some of the businesses that are currently here is getting our people to support them. Um, too many people go to Blue Springs, Oak Grove, the things they can get here, and when the business here can't get our business, they can't attract us from anywhere else either, so we need to support the businesses that we do have.
Your, your Facebook, your, what Alderman Arnold had to say, don't take no for an answer. I, I've been beating the door down 54th Street for three years now, trying to get them interested to come down here. Uh, Facebook them, get their phone numbers, whatever you gotta do, you know, go to your Facebook and say, "Quick trip, you know, hey, I live in Green Valley, why won't you come?" The more people that, that go on their, their websites and go to their Facebook and say, "Hey, you know, I live in Green Valley, what's the deal?", that just helps us draw more attention. The more attention we get drawn to Green Valley, the more they come down and look at us.
So Casey's does not own property rights to this area? They don't own like a...
I, I, I'm not legal, I'm not legal with...
Love us, I guess.
Lands for sale, they, Quick Trip can buy it if they want. Yeah, so...
And I know there's kind of a misconception out there too, that, you know, I've seen a lot here about that, you know, Green Valley only does business with Casey's since we have three of them. That's not true, I mean, they're, they, you know, lease or purchase the property and we don't really have anything to do with that, so, they just, they do well in this area, so they, you know, have expanded to that three stores.
That's what someone told me, I was misinformed.
I think the other important thing also is that we're, we're just now starting to finish the main street, going from Walnut all the way down to Wicker Parkway, so we're gonna be finishing off that and so that's gonna leave more land available for new retail, so...
We're limited to what businesses want to come here. We can't say nay to most businesses. If they want to come here, they have the rights to buy property, they have the right to do business.
It doesn't hurt to knock on their door, let them know you want them here, trust me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Us to the city for a new establishment.
I think he's asking what it costs us. Well, if, if they come, if the business, the way most generally works, the business is buy the property, and then they, they have investors or so on, and then they build their business. For the city sometimes, like the Northland Development, we as a city did put money into that to help get development started there, so that's, there's a couple different ways it can go.
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering why the, uh, Green Valley Speedway was shut down. I've heard a few different reasons, but I just wanted to hear what you guys had to say on that one.
Legal.
Like noise complaints a lot.
Yeah.
The, the Speedway has not been shut down. Their conditional use permit, the FAD, has been revoked. Um, they're in the process of applying for another, and if it meets standards, then they will be approved, should be approved, and they, they will be, continue doing business. If we can't come up with a, um, reasonable, um, conditional use permit, the problem is is the property isn't zoned for, um...
Speedway use.
Speedway.
Yeah.
So we have to do what's called a conditional use permit, that first standing in zoning determines if it's a viable business to be in there, then they present it to the board, and then the board determines whether or not they'll approve it.
So are you saying that it could possibly move, move to somewhere else and reopen there? Or, well, not reopen, but...
Within town?
Yeah, somewhere.
I'm very unlikely, it's, I don't think we have any other property that's zoned for it either, but, but, um, if, if, I mean, they can always move elsewhere to another town if they choose to. Um, I don't believe that's, uh, Mr. Strauss's, um, intention, I don't believe it's the city's intention.
No matter where he's at, he has to have a permit, I mean, race, speedways just aren't something that falls within normal city zoning, they're not a special thing, so, and, you know, the issue there was when he was issued the permit, you know, 12 years ago, you know, there was a 65 decibel level on it, and, you know, it was, you know, difficult for him to meet that, so that's the reason that it was, the permit's currently, you know, pulled.
That makes more sense. One more question to add to that. If he does end up being like he doesn't, he decides not to reply for it, like, or if it gets, you guys still say no on it or something, is there any, do you guys have any plans already for what you guys could put there otherwise?
We, we're not the property owner, so we wouldn't have...
But would you guys consider buying it and putting something else there?
I don't think.
The city's generally not in the real estate business. Um, if he, if he, the business went out there, it would be his responsibility to sell, sell to someone that they could meet the zoning requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would a new establishment go?
Uh, it's kinda up to, kinda up to the, the business in question, uh, more likely right now, I think we have new businesses looking, they're gonna be looking here in the, you know, Fourpoint area since we just did a lot of improvements there. Uh, I know there's, you know, uh... Open area down by where Patricia's is at, there's some lots there they'd be looking at. If they're, uh, industrial type business, we have the industrial park up on Jefferson and the Outer Road that they'd be looking in. So it kinda depends on what it is, what type of business they are, they'd have to go to an area that, you know, fit their, fit their type of business.
Okay. Thank you. What kind of establishments could offset us from surrounding communities?
Well, I think the rate check already does offset us from... But when businesses come in here, it's all, it's always business choice that they want to bring in here. Um, we can try and attract different businesses, but it's, it's only up to the business if they decide to move, they, they're the ones risking their capital to, to come here, so they're the ones to decide what they think will make a go of it here in Green Valley.
It's gonna be probably businesses that necessarily aren't found in Blue Springs or found in Oak Grove, and we're kind of interested in spot right in between. More than likely, we're not gonna see a Walmart in Green Valley ever because if Walnut Grove is one of Blue Springs, you can get the one really quick. So it's gonna be businesses that aren't, you know, located in each community, more than likely, or businesses like a McDonald's or things like that that, you know, can be located about anywhere, do well still, so...
What would be the effects, positive and negative, of having new establishments?
Some of the things with positive effects is that we'd have business here in Green Valley, people would be spending their dollars here as opposed to Blue Springs, Independence, Oak Grove, and the positive, really the positive effect is that the sales tax that they are now paying in Blue Springs, Oak Grove, Independence, that helps their cities operate, would then be spent here and help us meet some of our needs in, in providing service to the citizens. Uh, if we could get that, it's been estimated at over a million dollars a year in sales tax gets spent elsewhere outside our community that, that could have been spent here. Uh, if that kinda money was available to us, I think people would understand why we might be able to lower our taxes. So, uh, so having new businesses come in will help that. Losing businesses is just the opposite. We would lose sales tax, we would lose the revenue, and, uh, it just would add to a, not a very good community feel, not having something available in the community, which we, everybody would like to have stuff here that we would like to be able to go and shop here.
Good question.
Thank you. What can the use of our, of our community do to help?
These staff have jumped in too. Uh, you wanna, you wanna jump in there?
Yeah, you know, one of the, I didn't get your name.
Oh, Seth.
Seth. One of the things you can do Seth is, you know, you guys actually already do it, some of the, uh, stormwater projects that you've done, where you guys went out and stenciled, uh, you know, that it, it leads to a stream, litter patrol, that sort of thing, those are all very important things to do, but also it's some of what the board's sharing with you, go out and be a good representative of Green Valley to other people, uh, that's one of the most important things.
You probably always call, call our Parks Department, they can probably always find something for you to do.
I know a lot of like the planning stuff around Pavilion, that was all Boy Scouts, I believe.
Things like that, so...
And they designed our cases to hold our different patches from police departments that they were doing from all over the world. We do it to break down on them.
Encourage your parents to, to do things here in Green Valley, I'd go there, it's available here.
Thank you.
I'm Joshua Womack. We had some other questions about other topics. Is the city responsible for the amount of personal property tax we pay?
Well, a portion of it. Uh, there's... There's different tax entities that have part of the personal property. You have your school, the school district, uh, fire district, library, us...
Jackson County.
Jackson County.
Blind trust.
There's blind trust in there too, right? Does that get them all?
Sports authority.
Sports authority there too.
So it's all a big piece of pie and we just get a section of it, so we're responsible for...
Fairly small slice of that pie.
Yeah.
I wanna say about 18% of total taxes paid come to the City of Green Valley.
Yeah.
Does that through the debt levy?
I'm sorry?
Largest part of it?
Yeah, the largest part of it is just existing debt that we have out there already, so, you know, when the city builds, uh, projects, roads, that sort of thing, we have to go out and get loans just like other people sometimes, so, uh, we issue debt, and in order to pay that debt back, we have to collect that through the property taxes. Uh, school district has a similar model, they get about 52% of all of the personal property taxes paid, and, and most of it goes to pay their debt as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dakota. Um, what type of establishments are we looking for in Green Valley?
What was that?
What type of establishments are we looking for in Green Valley?
I'd say any sort of retail, any light manufacturing or industrial, anything that'll bring jobs here, uh, you know, places to eat, that sort of thing, um, anything that'll keep people in town and, and spending their money within, within town instead of, again, like many of us have said, going to Oak Grove, Blue Spring, or, or Independence for that matter.
What, what would you like to see here in Green Valley? Let's turn the question around, what would you like to see?
I'm not really sure.
Would you like someplace to go bowling, go out and eat?
At work. You know, Mayor, if I could real quick, your name is Corey?
Dakota.
Dakota, okay, sorry, I got it, you're infected or something, I can't hear very well tonight. Uh, people always talk about retail and, and entertainment, that sort of thing, um, and those are all things that we need in Green Valley. I don't, not many people know this, but, uh, there's this corridor from Columbia, Missouri to Lawrence, Kansas, and it's called the Animal Health Corridor, and 67% of the entire world's animal health research products, that sort of thing, comes out of that stretch in between I-70, on I-70 between Columbia and Lawrence. And so, that's another thing the city tries to attract is research and development, uh, manufacturing jobs, I mean, because we, like the mayor alluded to earlier, there's a lot of businesses that want a lunch crowd. Well, we get a lunch crowd through having jobs in Green Valley and the availability of, uh, factories, warehouses, that, that sort of thing that keeps our residents working in town. And so, as much as we push for retail and everything else, we also have this additional push in tandem, uh, to attract things like that through the Animal Health Corridor.
Thank you.
My question's a little off topic, but why is .22 so scarce? Like, why is the .22 long rifle round so scarce?
Police chief? Um, you're in luck, hi Josh, uh, in the audience, I have with me my sergeant who actually purchases all the ammunition for a police department, and he runs our range, the name Sergeant Valcheck. Sergeant Valcheck, I am going to correct that question, you use, you do a lot of ammunition in our 40 millimeter ammunition and everything else we do.
Josh, the only I could think of was this, uh, supply and demand, when the supply got, got short, people started buying lots of ammunition, .22 ammo was very popular, and so they bought up all they could, and, uh, factories just can't keep up with the demand for it, so they're now, you see a little bit of it coming out now, I watch for it, I try to grab a few boxes here and there, but, uh, most of the other types of ammunition, uh, like the 9mm, 40, plus the .23, that's all pretty much come back, but it's the pricier ammo that does get, the quantity of the .22 does. So that's about the best answer I can give you. I think it's just, uh, when everybody got, got kinda scared that ammo was going away, they all ran out of what they could afford, and that was .22, and so now it's just kinda trying to catch up, supplies now to catch up with the hand again.
You know, just in the north of it, there's Lake City Ammunition Plant, and they're a large, large producer for the military, or .56mm, which is your 16 round all the way up to the larger, you know, 50 caliber, even bigger I believe, and you'll hear a lot of times they'll test the ammo out at night and whatnot, and whenever there's not something like that, Manasandar, RAC, and all that stuff going on, they do tend to make ammunition more geared towards the common, you know, just everyday person, but when the efforts are going on that we're dealing with now, they kind of tend to focus on the military only. So you'll see a lot, it's just a lot of short, shortages like Josh said, it's a supply and demand, it's really, it's just up, so...
That's one of the biggest, uh, one of the biggest things on .22, one of the largest manufacturers of .22 ammunition burnt out, and they're just now having injury help, just now opening back up, starting to produce again.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your option on using the city's Facebook page as a way to contact with pavilions of Green Valley?
Uh, opinion, I think, that's the one.
Okay, so what's, uh, opinion about using Facebook? I kind of gave them a subject, I thought we might disagree on it, I didn't know. It's a new disagreement, so.
It can be a very good and it can be a very bad idea, depending on how it's managed. The information that's kept on it has to be kept up to date and as correct as possible. I mean, a certain amount of monitoring has to be done where if comments are allowed to be posted on it, you have to make sure and monitor those so that sometimes, uh, stuff that shouldn't be posted on it doesn't get posted. While you don't want to edit or limit people leaving their comments if they disagree with you, you want to make sure that they're done in a, in a format that, uh, that is publicly correct and not, uh, not an assault or, or any vulgar, vulgarity mixed in with that. So, it's, it's like with anything, it's an open forum that people can speak their minds and you're just really not sure what you're ever going to get, so.
That's one of the things we struggle with, is getting information out to the public. And there's a lot of models that said, you know, Facebook's a good, good way to use if it's used properly. You know, one of the things we'd like to see would be more people come to our city meetings and be a part of what goes on. So, it's, uh, if it's used right, it's a great tool.
I know there are a lot of different pages out there now, in the Green Valley pages, and some of them have, you know, well over, you know, a thousand likes, so there's, you know, a lot of people seeing them. Uh, I think a lot of times, some information on there, you know, gets, you know, maybe not be totally accurate or whatnot, you know, people get hearsay and all that. I know that, you know, we have to be careful, elected officials, you know, I see stuff on there and I'm constantly the one to reply to stuff, but we have to be careful that, you know, we're not, you know, making promises or, you know, saying things that we don't have power to keep, or, you know, we may know, you know, have some, we may have privileged information about certain things that we can't share because of legal issues or whatever that might explain something to somebody, but yet we can't do that because of ongoing, you know, things involving legal, so, you know, don't necessarily think that if you're on Facebook or you're posting something and no one's replying to you, it's not that we don't want to, we may not, we may not be able to, so. I know that Ryan would prefer that none of us say anything on there, but, uh-
That could be your disagreement right there. Facebook and social media is, it's, it's very difficult to manage, and one of the reasons it is, is because it's the first time we've ever had to deal with it. I mean, it's, it's evolving constantly, uh, it becomes a bigger driver in complaints, concerns, citizens' feedback. It's a great opportunity for us to see what the citizens think, but kind of like what the mayor just said, it's also very difficult, I mean, imagine if, um, you were on Facebook and you, you had, you know, some friends that were posting things on there that just weren't true, but you knew that you couldn't respond to it. That's kind of the situation that sometimes the city's in, there may be legal battles or lawsuit or whatever the case may be. Even recently with, with the racetrack and the revocation hearings that we had to go through, you know, it's extremely difficult from the city's perspective and especially for the elected officials to see some of the comments out there, knowing that they're bound by confidentiality and that it wouldn't be ethical for them to comment on some of this, you know, the information that's been put out there. So, it's a real trick bag sometimes, it can be very difficult to manage, but we've, we've been working really hard just to engage citizens and get people more involved in the city through our, our Facebook page.
I think more people definitely recognize us now, I think, maybe from there. I know that my wife will no longer go to Patricia's with me, I pretty much live by myself. I usually run into somebody that's asking me something, so, and that's fine, I don't, I don't mind that at all, so, I don't mind answering questions, I don't mind someone going with me, but.
I don't know if they're going to always start to do it yet or not, but, um, I know Kansas City, well, you just started using Twitter to help them get tips and other information is out there for people, I might not, I don't intend to directly say or go on the campus. Uh, I don't know if you haven't started or what your opinion on doing that, if you're considering it.
That's actually, it's something that we're, uh, the city side, I say the city, the city and the police department, we're, we're all the same team, uh, they have their own Facebook page, some of those things, and it's similar in other communities like Kansas City. Uh, we're trying to become more involved and, and more present on Twitter. It's a completely different language. I don't use Twitter at all, my wife thinks it's just awesome, I have a hard time keeping up with it. But you see, you know, Chief Forte down in Kansas City, a lot of times he'll live tweet stuff out, you know, if they have a shooting or something or if they're looking for suspect information, it's amazing. Uh, we do use a program called Nixle, and it's, it's similar, it's not two-way communication, but we can shoot out alerts to anybody that's signed up, uh, and they'll receive text messages to their phone, and we'll use that with events, uh, if we have suspect information or we're looking for crime tips. So, again, it's, it's just like all the other social media, you know, we're trying to get up to speed as it rolls out every day, new stuff.
Who else have anything on social media?
My name is Ann, and I am a merit badge counselor for this group. Um, that is all of the questions that the boys, and they came up with every one of those questions other than the last on their own. Um, boys, those guys have been sitting here listening, and I know the answer to this before I ask, but I have to, have you thought of any other questions you'd like to have answered? I hear the cricket, okay, all right. Well, then, I have to thank you guys once again for giving us the opportunity to earn some of our requirements on that merit badge. Two more to go, I think we've got it. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you guys for coming in, I mean, I know, I don't know if I've been brave enough to get up in front of a room full of adults and ask questions like that, so I want to thank you guys for coming in and doing what I had, and anytime, you know, feel free to come and meet or contact us if you have any questions or anything else you, you need, so, just want to give you a round of applause or just want to help with that.
All right. Next item in is public hearing. Uh, we have delinquent and or incomplete two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen occupational licenses.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the board, uh, it's a requirement of our city ordinance to make you aware of those who currently hold or were previously holding occupational licenses or are incomplete in current year, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, Julia Holland's been working on that, and she's willing to be speaking to that and any questions you have, we're going to have to answer, so right now, I'd like to turn it over to her and she'll talk to you about all the businesses that are listed on our agenda tonight.
Hello. Um, we have before you nineteen businesses that are either delinquent and or incomplete. I'll give you the first four are businesses that have submitted an application, however they're incomplete. Those would be Fourth Generation Tree Service, Ace Electrical LLC, Bandwidth.com, and SAI Enterprises doing business as Smoke City. As of today, Fourth Generation Tree Services did submit the information that they were lacking, and it is the recommendation of the city clerk to approve and issue the license accordingly. Ace Electrical, we have made several attempts on all of these, specifically this one, we've had approximately six contacts, whether it's mails, being letters mailed, calling, site visits. This information, they needed to submit a master trade certification, theirs that they had submitted was expired, so we needed a new one that wasn't expired. And, um, based on the lack of communication that we have not received, it is the recommendation of the city clerk to revoke this license, um, accordingly upon your approval. Bandwidth.com is one that we have been in communication with, uh, ongoing, and even with the last final notice that we mailed to them, as well as Smoke City, we've been in communication with those. They needed workers' comp and SAI Enterprises needed a no tax due letter. And, um, based on the communication that has been going back and forth between, um, the city clerk's office and the business, it's the recommendation to continue working with this vendor until further notice is made to the Board of Alderman. Any questions?
So, we've, uh, pretty much exhausted every avenue trying to get these people to square up with us.
I would say so.
Actually, at this time, if they, we've done more than we can in terms of due diligence to get, um, these businesses in compliance with what our code states, at this point, it's not a cost benefit to the city to continue trying to get this information in from these businesses. This license is only cost twenty-five dollars a year. Recertified nails, as well as staff time, it's just not cost effective to continue in this way, plus they're non-responsive. Those that have responded to the two that fully are spoken about, we are working with them and we don't recommend merit authorization at this point, because of that, it's those that, that are non-responsive or that don't want to work with the city, that we have to work kind of at a minimum end.
Okay, so, that leaves the last fifteen. Robbie's Home Repair, um, as of today, we've received their, this next set, I should clarify, these are licenses renewals that we have not received the application for at all, no communication has been received. Robbie's Home Repair, we received the occupational license today, so it'll be, uh, city clerk recommends approval and issue of the license accordingly. GRS LLC, Hyatt's Painting and Hilder Brand Construction LLC. This was a database error in our database, it was marked inside city limits, uh, these businesses are actually outside city limits. So, the recommendation is, uh, that we correct the software and that we send a letter to these businesses stating that they are no longer to operate within the city of Green Valley if they're doing, um, if they're doing businesses. You have anything to add on that?
I do, one thing, uh, I'd like to clarify, in our ordinance, it states that there are businesses within city limits and businesses that are outside of city limits. So, those that are within city limits are considered storefront businesses within the city. That's what we currently have jurisdiction over in terms of what we can do to finalize those businesses or what we can do to kind of force their hand at paying a license within the day. And that's what's legal to speak about here. Those three businesses were noted as within city limits in our software system, and actually they are not, they're outside city limits, which means they come into the city, they like to do some sort of business, obtain an occupational license for conducting that business, uh, but we have no way to force their hand to still obtain a business license or renew a license at this time. So, in these particular cases, um, we don't have any more ground command besides what we already, what we already shut, so in this, in this city, that's why the organization was way up.
Okay, um, we had two that called in and indicated, um, that they were no longer doing business, and that was Golden Touch Cleaning and Mystery Coop LLC. So, we are going to deactivate them from the software and they will not continue to receive, uh, any kind of notices. The next three are Extreme Blasting General Fence and Miles Power Sports. These three, they, um, in particular, they had not returned in any communication with us after receiving the certified letters. So, um, it is the recommendation of the city clerk to issue a denial letter, uh, as far as denying them to operate within the city of Green Valley. Diamond Collision, uh, we've been in communication with, that gentleman came in, sat down, spoke to me, explained the situation that they're in, and it is related to their no tax due letter, however, they are working with the Department of Revenue and they are on a payment system to get their active pay and, um- To get current. And so, um, it is the recommendation of the city clerk to issue a temporary license with the, uh, knowing that they are working towards getting their no tax due. And then-
May I, may I read your statement? Does everybody understand what a no tax due is? They not understand that. For the audience, what that means is they have to prove that if they have retail sales, they don't owe taxes to the state of Missouri based on those sales. And we have to have proof in order to issue them a city license, we have to have proof that they don't owe taxes in order to issue that license. This particular business is in arrears with their taxes for previous years, uh, and they have been working with the Department of Revenue to become current on those taxes. There's been proof made to us, not just by the business owner, but by the department itself, and since we have that proof in hand, we are more than willing to work with them and more than willing to issue that temporary license, uh, continuing upon the fact, of course, that they continue to try to pay off those taxes, uh, through the business. We don't want to injure anybody who's doing business in the city just because they're trying to make money to pay those taxes off. But in this particular case, we want to, we would like to recommend an exception, uh, based on that, um, based on that, that analysis that we have from that business owner and the hard work.
And then the final seven, Fig Fitness, Iron Eagle Customs, K L H Electric, Kyler's Hair Studio, Nix Lawn Mowing. All seven of those certified letters were, were returned to the city as returned to sitter unclaimed. It is the recommendation of the city clerk to, uh, issue a letter stating no longer allowed to operate. Assuming that they're not going to receive a certified letter, they may or may not receive or be able to accept that letter, but for documentation purposes, we would go forth with issuing that letter for record. Are there any other questions?
On your, um, you had three that you did, um, denied, Extreme Building, Miles Power Sports, and who's the other one?
Gina Osten.
Gina, let's see, yep. Did you have anything specific or were you just wanting to clarify?
I was just noting-
Okay.
I will note that there are several businesses outside of city limits that have not responded to our, which do our request for renewal. Like I noted earlier in that case, we can't necessarily go counting on them, so we aren't necessarily moving further. We're going to probably issue these denial letters based on, uh, if you approve or deny the recognition through name and ID. And in doing that, we would have to completely refile for brand new, like we're under brand new license number, and with that, we would just start them up again. And we're doing that if we want to show within our system that they were delinquent or they were in compliance or certain areas of compliance, that we will establish a pattern and feature and we have a need that very early. But that's as far as we can go with the outside of town businesses that we go with families. So, these are, these are more insights in the name of what we're going to do, something that, and so we made recommendations that we have. Like I said earlier, for our code, it's a requirement for us to hold a quality hearing to give these business owners a chance to come and warranty award to the sudden issues they may have in updating these licenses. And at this point in time, um, we haven't heard anything out of today from the businesses, and we've been in contact with them on a continual basis, up to ten times from these businesses, so, um, it's, it's, in my opinion, we have a reason, um, on our standpoint, um, to continue to work with these businesses that have responded, um, or are the really working on, so, um, in general, this is kind of our, our last stand, and we're either cool or denial on our recommendation.
As this is a public hearing, now I do need to, uh, give anyone an opportunity to speak for or against any possible action against any of these businesses on this list, so, is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against any ideas tonight? All right, standing down, I'll close the public hearing. So, what you need from us then is a motion to, uh-
Follow your recommendations.
Yes, please.
A motion that we accept the recommendations staff on these businesses.
A motion, Alderman, Johnston, to-
Accept the recommendations given by staff. Drive a second. Second, Alvin West. Any discussion? Any discussion?
One question, Mayor. How many, how many businesses complied and no issues with their pay for it? Just to get an idea.
I believe the answer is close to 300, just inside city limits and approximately 250-ish outside city limits did apply or did comply. We had 76 outside city limits that did comply.
Give us a better idea on what this list means.
Yes, exactly. And it's good to know that all of those that need master trade certification, the exceptions one are compliant. Which is a good turn for last.
Anyone else have anything?
On a major trade, is Acellecto, is that related to Hanaway?
As far as we, we, that's exactly what I'm asking. And as far as we understand it, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is need for an executive session for items pertaining to legal. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for items under legal.
Still move.
Have a motion, Alvin Arnold, have a second.
Second.
Second Alvin Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alvin Arnold.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Yes.
Alvin Scully.
Yes.
Alvin Schaefer.
Yes.
Alvin Johnson. Call for me back to order another session. Seeing no previous business or new business, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include bill number B-14-30 for a first and second read this evening.
Still move.
Got motion from Alvin Arnold to amend the agenda to add B-14-30 for a first and second read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Headley. Any discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? All right, seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, agenda is amended. Next item are ordinances.
First ordinance is bill B-14-26, ordinance amending chapter 130, municipal court, city of Green Valley, municipal co-coat, article one in general, section 130.030, additional court costs, A1 shelters for victims of domestic violence, second reading, ordinance 2348.
Mayor, I move to accept bill 1426 for a second read and make it ordinance 2348.
Have a motion, Alvin Arnold, to approve bill B-14-26 for its second reading, make the ordinance 2348. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Scully. Any discussion? Staff have anything to add on that?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's just the second read of, to add the fees, to bring the fees up to $4 from $2.
Okay. See no additional discussion, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Bill B-14-27, first reading, second reading.
First and second. First and second reading denied.
First reading, an ordinance amending the budget, city of Green Valley, Missouri for fiscal year 2014. First reading, bill B-14-27.
Mayor, I request that we, bill 14-27 for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
Have a motion, Alvin West, to approve bill B-14-27 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Johnson. Any discussion? Staff have anything on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just the amendment that we do annually towards the end of the year to more accurately reflect the expenditures and revenues of the budget. I'll let Ms. Bowden answer any questions if the board has them.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first. Second reading, bill B-14-27, it will be ordinance 2349, which is an ordinance amending the budget, city of Green Valley, Missouri, fiscal year 2014. Ordinance 2349.
I move that we accept bill B-14-27 for its second reading, making it ordinance 2349.
Have a motion, Alvin West, to approve bill B-14-27 for its second reading, make the ordinance 2349. Do I have a second? Alvin Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-14-28, first reading, an ordinance calling an election in the city of Green Valley, Missouri on April 7, 2015. First reading, bill B-14-28.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 14-28 for its first reading, bring it back for a second reading by title only.
Have a motion, Alvin Headley, to accept bill B-14-28 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Schaefer. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, as it says, just calling the election on April, April 7 of 2015. The filing will begin December 16th and will close on Tuesday, January 20th. The lottery will be held on January 21st, the following day. This is on, again, for a first and second read tonight, since we are not having a meeting on the 22nd, and accordingly, public notice will be published tomorrow through the examiner.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first. Second reading, bill B-14-28, it will be ordinance 2350, which is an ordinance calling an election, city of Green Valley, Missouri, April 7, 2015. Ordinance 2350.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 14-28 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2350.
Have a motion, Alvin Headley, to accept bill B-14-28 for its second reading, make an ordinance 2350. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
West. Six zero, Mayor. Next ordinance is bill B-14-30, first reading, an ordinance amending chapter 320, speed regulations, section 320.050, unlawful to interfere with radar, other speed checking devices. First reading, bill B-14-30.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 14-30 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading.
Have a motion, Alvin Headley, to accept bill B-14-30 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Arnold. Staff have any?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as discussed earlier, the city has been, has been sued by the ACLU challenging this ordinance. This amendment to the ordinance will strike the last, half of the last sentence of it and will bring it into compliance with, with the law. Basically, they're asserting that it infringes on the First Amendment right to free speech by flashing the headlights. The city's position is that that's not the intent of the ordinance, but in order to further clarify, this, we'll be making this change.
All right. Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first. Second reading, bill B-14-30, ordinance 2351, an ordinance amending chapter 320, speed regulations, section 320.050, unlawful to interfere with radar, other speed checking device, second reading, ordinance 2351.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 14-30 for its second reading, bring it back as ordinance 2351.
Have a motion, Alvin Headley, to accept bill B-14-30 for its second reading, make an ordinance 2351. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Arnold. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Scully.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Jamie. Resolution R-14-52, resolution by the Board of Alderman, city of Green Valley, Missouri, declaring Friday, December 26, 2014, and Friday, January 2, 2015, as city holidays. Resolution R-14-52.
Mayor, I recommend that we accept resolution R-14-52 as read.
Have a motion, Alvin Johnson, to accept resolution R-14-52. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Scully. Any discussion? Staff have anything to add first?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just per the discussion that we had at the November 24th meeting. We'll be closing City Hall for the day of Christmas and the day of New Year's.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I thought we were going to put something in place, just be an ongoing thing where you have to do it every year.
Yeah, we will. We thought we'd go ahead and prepare the ordinance right now, and then I've asked Jamie to go ahead and prepare a policy that can be included in our personnel policy, and it will identify what days City Hall will be closed following. Just thought with all the different holidays out there, we probably wanted to have further discussion with the board about which days would be eligible versus which ones are not.
And I was also thinking about comments I made in the last meeting about the Monday off, and I thought that we might be able to accept that on a short staff where the Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, half staff would get one off and the other, those half staff would get the other off.
Yeah, it's definitely a possibility, yeah.
That was my thoughts on it, because I reconsidered it, you know, when the E's are normally not that busy anymore.
Yeah.
Anyone else to add? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Resolution R-14-53, resolution by the Board of Alderman, city of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the allocation of one 2014 fiscal year meeting salary from each elected official totaling $375 as a donation toward the Senior Holiday Gift Basket Program. Resolution R-14-53.
I move that we accept resolution R-14-53 as read.
Have a motion, Alvin West, to approve resolution R-14-53. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Scully. Any discussion?
Nothing additional, Mayor.
Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item, the city attorney reports.
Nothing to report, Your Honor, thank you.
Next item, the city administrative staff reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll start with Jamie.
Something in front of you, is any play staff holiday party? We'll be holding that on Friday, December 19th. We'll be giving away raffles to our employees, providing them with lunch, and we'll be playing some little game. If you do plan on attending, just let me know, once we can provide, if there's more to be a quorum, but also if you want to participate in our game. And if you do, come talk to me and we'll get you a set, should be awesome.
Depends on what the game is.
Huh?
What's the game?
It's like family to you. And actually, we've had a great response, even though I got an ooh from Alvin Arnold.
You watched Andrew's food.
Had a lot, a lot of people, very interested, and should be a lot of fun, so. If you just want to come and watch and be a spectator or just have lunch and chat with some employees, that'd be great for you, from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock on Friday the 19th, so. Go ahead.
Ken Murphy next.
I think you probably saw something in the email, but just wanted to say again that the Highway Commission did have their meeting on Thursday, and they did vote in favor of our proposal, doing the driveway relinquishment of Jefferson and McQuarrie versus paying $600,000 for the full bridge that came with the construction estimate for the main street project. I think you're right, but in the email, you know, without having that special meeting last Tuesday and coming up and approving that ordinance, the Highway Commission probably would not have even considered that, so. Thanks for doing that, and we'll look forward to moving on.
Chief.
Yeah. The Senior Citizen Gift Basket will be going out on the 20th, so we'll start in mourning there and start working. We definitely don't have as many baskets as we have in the past because of how we changed up a little bit, which being 75 years old and then you have to sign up to the city basket, I think, I mean, we thought it was pretty easy, but we're close as we are. So, and I, and I know a lot of people do volunteer, we'll still take a volunteer to help a little more, we're not going to have any, any basket for a little bit healthier this year as far as items, so, because we cut back a little bit, but we were able to kind of beef up that a little bit also, so that'll make it very nice. And again, thanks for those of you who did donate to that, we really do appreciate that, and I'll leave you alone, thank you.
Meet down at Patricia's again?
Yes, sir.
What time?
Um, I think we're going to start at 8:00 again, between 8:00 and 9:00 around then.
What was that date?
The 20th.
20th.
Which is Saturday morning. Kind of.
I just have two items. One of them is actually on behalf of Shannon. He's, they scheduled their preschool Christmas program on the second Monday of December every year. This was his last year to see his youngest do the program, so he's missing tonight, but I wanted to let you know that I've been working with him, and we're going to have a bid going out by the end of the week for the pool management services for next year. So he's been working with Melissa, and that will be posted out on the streets. Then the last thing that I have is, we've said it several times, but I think there needs to be an official motion by the board and a vote to cancel the December 22nd meeting. At the last board meeting, we decided that we were going to have everything on this meeting and do away with that second one.
I'll entertain the motion then to cancel the December 22nd board meeting. Alvin West, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Schaefer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Hey, next up is Board of Alderman reports and comments.
Alvin Arnold. Stopped in at Public Works new building the other day, take a quick look. I know it's not finished, but they're doing a good job putting that up and told the crew down the thanks. They mentioned that a number of people had stopped by and told them thanks for putting the wall up down on the side bar, which I'm glad our citizens were doing that and letting them know that they appreciate the extra effort they were putting out, so getting a little bit of feedback to them. That's all.
Alvin West.
Uh, yes, I want to thank Kathy for all her help on, on the budget questions that I have.
Alvin Headley.
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Scully.
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Schaefer.
Uh, just a quick thing, been out talking to people in Ward 1, turned some, turned the list in the wrong, a few things that they would like to look at, and would like to thank staff for such a great turnaround and speed, speed, get out and looking and visiting with the people. I had one or two phone calls back that, I thought that was great, you guys got back on as fast as you did. So, thanks, thanks, Ken, and, and Tom and everybody else for getting out there.
Alvin Johnson.
Um, no comment. I had a question on the, on that new sidewalk that we put in on at the lake there, those open areas, there's something to be put in there? I know they got the police tape or caution tape in there right now.
Well, I was going to let Ken answer this, but I have a great idea. We put a sign up right there that says Lover's Leap, off end of the lake. I've been waiting to use that one for two weeks now, all right, Ken?
Yeah, we made the order for the fence, somewhere between our order sheet and when the buyer actually ordered it, and we're adding it up, so they, I think there's four hooks there for the corners. They've been ordered, we should actually have this this week and get those in trouble, so, just kind of a little mix up there. so, just kind of a little mix up there, but they will be in, that'll be included in close. And if you remember, those areas were just to meet ADA requirements, you just have to turn around, and the link to that required to, so.
God bless you.
All right, anyone else? Next up is Mayor's Report. The only thing I have is, since we won't have an official meeting again, I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to report, and do not believe we have a need for an additional executive session since we already had one. So that being said, we will adjourn.